... for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Microphones on there? And we're convening a special city council meeting. This meeting is to address some things that had come up before P&amp;Z. Back in July, we had an extensive backlog of P&amp;Z items. We had seven public hearings that night, and the first one took quite a few hours. And so, as you present all know, you sat through that meeting. You didn't get a chance to have your public hearings to the fullest. So they were continued to the August meeting. And we want to take the opportunity, and it was unfortunate that you got backed up through the backlog of the committee, that commission there. And so we convene a special meeting on Tuesday, September 29th, to address those things. If they can be addressed tonight, you guys have the opportunity to move forward a couple weeks earlier than you would if we waited till September. If they can't be addressed tonight, then they'll be pushed out to the September meeting. And if anything that needs to be taken care of subsequent to this, you have two more weeks to get it done before our meeting in September 12th. So with that, we will start with the clerk reading the meeting policy.
The agenda as printed or amended will be followed so all necessary and needed action by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. We are unable to accept prior items at this special meeting. Copies of the agenda are available at the back table. Please sign in and turn yourself ones up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. First item is Jay Hegelberg and Chelsea Three LLC, request for an interim use permit for outdoor storage on two-acre industrial parcel. Two zero zero nine zero Iguana Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'll make a motion to approve the request with a decision and findings dated August 29th, 2017.
Second, Dan.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I think the big question that came up during the planning and zoning meeting was how it wasn't as much about the tiny homes, but it was more about the outside storage and making sure that it was maintained. And that was one of the other concerns from the resident. I know there's no real plans for, you know, that it was mainly just RVs, but I'm just... Is there anything else? I was just going through this, and I'm just trying to think, is there anything that we need else needed to add in here to address the concern about making sure that it's not, doesn't turn into just a rundown and wasn't kept up? I don't know if there's, you know, where everything's on the, meant to be on the gravel. I think that covered everything, but I just wasn't sure if there's anything else that we needed to have in there.
Well, specifically on number seven, page two, "Outdoor storage is limited to the shaded area designated on the site plan, which may include licensed and operable recreational vehicles and seasonal storage such as boats and ice houses and storage containers with materials and supplies, tiny homes and other products, materials and equipment associated with business. It does not include semi-trucks or any storage within the grass areas not so designated." Is it clear, Mr. Hegelberg, in your opinion here that we're talking about recreational vehicles?
Yes.
This is not to become a dump or a junkyard or a collection of other odds and ends, but...
Yep. And that's why, you know, when we were discussing it, I threw in semis because the load and then just the heavy traffic they bring and that type of thing. And someone drops a trailer off, and who knows when they're gonna pick it up. And we did discuss that, you know, the contract that day that we signed will tell them that they have to, it has to be licensed. It has to be left on the trailer, so they can't just bring a boat in and push it off and drive away with the trailer. So apparently it's got to be left on wheels so it could be moved if needed.
All right. So we don't specifically state that in seven, so I think we need to include that, that it needs to remain on the trailer, that this is not for permanent, or semi-permanent storage. There's a statement here, "Storage containers with materials and supplies," and I think that specifically had to do with the tiny homes. It wasn't to be other general storage containers? Was that your understanding as well?
Right. There is a container that we own that's on-site currently that will probably stay on-site, but that would be the only one at this time.
But we wouldn't expect to see a multitude of containers with various storage items in there?
No. No, we don't plan that either. Again, we're trying to get everything mobile, so, you know, you go on different sites, and because we're using classified material, we want to be able to treat the gravel when no one's there, even if people are there, and that's why it means we move them. So, you know, we don't have weeds growing a bit between the vehicles or anything, so... My OCD wouldn't allow it anyway, so I'm pretty safe on that. But I understand the concern of the neighborhood, you know, but there's, and we'll try to, you know, put the fence up, we'll do the shrubberies along the fence on that north side, so it's not 346 feet of fence. And we'll put those in next spring when I can get railroads.
So if we were to amend item seven to "Storage containers with materials and supplies associated with the tiny home business?"
Yep.
To limit it to that specifically? Anybody see anything else that they want to address? It really had to do primarily with the outdoor storage. You are going to have one shell of a model out in front of the fence and a business sign out in front of the fence? Everything else will be behind the fence?
Yes, correct. And we never discussed it, but the gate will either be a keypad or a box. We haven't decided at this point. Still working, designing on those two options. And no one parking this seasonal? We have access to the property unless it's by appointment?
Okay.
So unless it's a person that's bringing their RV or parking it around, that would be the only people we'd actually give access to.
And so you could consider that as an appointment, then?
Yes. Yeah, because I'd have to be there, or someone would have to be there to allow me.
So access to the outdoor storage, so again, we can include that in the permit, so that access to outdoor storage would be by appointment only?
I would say for the seasonal, now, if you were parking your RV there and you wanted to pick your RV up for the weekend, I probably would, that person would have access on a general basis to be able to come and go.
Okay. So for seasonal parking would be on appointment only?
Yes.
All right. So we'll include that as an item, then? I know it's an eight-foot fence. Your dog would may not get enough sun there, but you figure that out when you get to it.
Yeah. But the dog is pretty hard, and so it should do all right. It's similar to what I had when I lived in Iowa and my restaurant, so it did fairly well.
Anything else on the council's part? So, Councilmember Bettinger, with the amendments made, do you still?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bryan, is it the second? Councilmember Rainville?
I'm in favor.
All right. So hearing no other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move the request for the interim use permit for Tony and Denise Elfelt at 7140 Old Viking Boulevard.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
In listening to the planning and zoning meeting, I think everything was captured. Liz has supplied the additional information in regards to the firearms license that was new at the meeting. The only concern I have is the hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. I know that there is a lot of people in and out of there. I listen to the meeting minutes or to the meeting, and I know you don't have, it's very sporadic, and you want to make sure to cover your bases. But I think we need to be cognizant of the neighbors and maybe limit some of those hours, and you'll just have to try to adapt to them. It's more your working than employees being there or people coming and assisting you. It sounded like more the administrative staff was pretty much day hours, is from what I remember. But I guess I'm leery about the eight-to-eight Monday through Sunday. It's like it doesn't give any break to the neighbors. I don't know what other council members think of that.
Well, let's ask Mr. Elfelt. Can you adjust that reasonably?
We're not there more than we are there. And the reason it was eight-to-eight was just to accommodate occasional people who may call up and say, "Can I bring something over?" It's not that, it's not that we're working from eight-to-eight. Somebody may call up and want to come over at seven o'clock. And we're not doing, we're not doing any of the auction pickup or previews on the weekends. The reason we needed weekends is because that's what, and I will go out with my crew, and then we'll come back, and sometimes we'll, on a Saturday or Sunday, we'll unload the trailer. So that is a short little bit of the day that we would be doing that. So even though it's a big window, the amount of time we're doing it is...
Is minimal?
Extremely minimal. The regular hours that were there on a kind of common recurring basis would be about nine until one or two. That's when the ladies are in the building doing the, taking the pictures and working on the computer.
So one of the things that, again, giving the neighbors an opportunity to have some protection. Councilmember Rainville, if you would like to suggest language to modify that, so the normal operating hours would be, but put an exception in there so that if it gets out of hand, the council doesn't have to come back and say, "Well, we gave you eight-to-eight, but your neighbors are complaining because you're running trucks till eight o'clock every Sunday night," which legally it could do. But if we wanted to modify it, saying the standard hours, the typical hours are, but the occasional pickup or delivery can happen up till eight o'clock at night or seven o'clock at night, whatever it might be. I think we talked at the meeting. Eight o'clock was reasonable because sometimes it's, it might be that late, but that's going to be the occasion rather than... And if we can put language in there to specific, to that specifically, then you can say, yes, it still is occasionally. If it becomes an every weekend thing and the neighbors start getting bothered by it, you know, ultimately that jeopardizes the IUP, but...
The only time people really come are his pickup. I mean, people come sporadically other than pickup. Maybe one or two to drop something off during the week, one or two to pick something up because they missed the pickup. So the pickup is really the only day where there's any noticeable traffic. And that usually stops at seven o'clock, the pickup.
All right. Do you want to propose language? Councilmember Bettinger.
I see no problem with hours. It's a small business, and I, with what he's doing, I think that the noise level, I think like he's out there running a Bobcat or tractors and stuff. I think it's pretty quiet. So I see no problem with the hours that he's requesting.
Anything else? Seeing and hearing nothing else? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move item three, request for preliminary and final plan approval to allow subdivision of two new five-acre plots for a total of three on 80-acre property owned at 19447 Nowland Boulevard of Tim and Renee King, according to facts and findings.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
In listening to the planning and zoning meeting, I think everything was captured in the updated planning or facts and findings, and I think it should be approved.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. And item number four.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
For discussion purposes, I would move the request for conditional use permit to allow multiple buildings on a single parcel, the addition of two new storage buildings, and an interim use permit to allow outdoor storage for a four-acre property at 19950 Iguana, owned by Josh Peterson.
I'll second.
Right. Motion is second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bettinger.
I'd also like to add into Shane's comments about agreement to take care of the stormwater pond.
I think with, there's a couple of items, you know, if you were there at the planning and zoning or listened to it, one of the comments that was made, it was unfortunate that significant changes were made in this request that were handed out at seven o'clock at the planning and zoning. The planning and zoning didn't really get a chance to review that, and there was, part of their discussion was that. One of the comments was, "Let's just pass it on to the council and let them figure it out." And so when the motion was made, there were four items that needed to be cleared up. And we have items two and seven on our note from the planner. I think the maintenance agreement, we haven't seen in a form acceptable to council yet. The gate hasn't been decided its location or its style. One of the concerns was people bringing in trailers, that they not be out in the street while the gate's going up. So I think that the number of items that were still open at planning and zoning would make it reasonable to say, get that information in and come back to the council in two weeks, get the information to us as soon as possible so the council can have it for their workshop, for discussion, and for voting on the 12th. Would seem to make sense to me. That way we could see the actual agreement before we agreed to it. We would, I would expect, since he's looking at specific gates, he'd have something decided on. We really haven't seen an architectural drawing yet. We still have just the view, but not an architectural drawing. So I think that there are, Councilmember Liz is going to give us the list from the commission of things that they were still looking for, but I don't see it here. We don't have the architectural details. So I think that we defined specifically what we're looking for, have it by the workshop, and, you know, my recommendation would be that you could revise the motion to tabling it until the September council meeting, pending the additional information being provided to the council, so we know what we're actually voting on.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
My purpose for moving it was for discussion based on what you have just stated, which was what the discussion was at the planning and zoning meeting. So I would amend my motion to delay or to post-table this until the September 7th and 12th meeting, and that the questions in regards to the gate, the architectural review, the stormwater pond, which is a new item.
Basically, the maintenance agreement?
Maintenance, yeah.
Operation and filtration base of the basin?
That we can have those things in front of us.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan. You know, one of the, when I was out there for review the other night, I, you know, there's, the driveway is a question and a concern, I guess. There's plenty of room right now if you had a truck and a trailer. If you were going into there with the fence moved forward and you didn't have a trailer, granted that that street doesn't have, is not a high-volume street, but I guess I'm my, I'm questioning how that gate's actually going to work so that people aren't necessarily waiting in the street, because if it was a key fob or a remote or however, you'd have to be in the driveway somehow to trigger it. And so now you potentially would have, you know, a trailer sitting in the middle of the road. Granted, also that it is the business owner's right to go ahead with the minimum of the 20-foot wide between storage buildings, but there's, I was thinking more if there happened to be a fire in a unit, it would be kind of hard to get, get the fire department in and out and around. And if that, if that's a concern for the council to consider, that those are getting kind of close together. And, you know, I guess, again, if the, if the, if the business wants, I know the planning and zoning said that there wouldn't necessarily be, or they did not, they did not recommend having the outside storage. Again, you know, there's potential for the room there, it is the business owner, and the question was, well, it'll be impacts nor removal, and I guess that's a consideration for the business owner to resolve how to plan that. So I don't, that would be another potential topic for discussion. And if, if we were to allow outside storage, then, you know, what would be the considerations in request for said storage?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Given Councilmember Bryan's comments and also the comments that were made at the planning and zoning committee about the closeness of the vehicles, excuse me, closeness of the, of the buildings and the issue of public safety, I don't know if it's something we would want the fire department to look at, to see if they feel they have adequate space if anything were to happen and they need to get equipment in there or near it? Or would they just fight it from the, the street with hoses? I don't know. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
The other thing that was mentioned at the planning and zoning is the addition of the doors. Eight new doors. We currently have a view of 20 doors, but these new ones are closer to the street, and is that, you know, aesthetically pleasing to look at that? I just know that was a question of P&amp;Z. There's really nowhere else to put the doors than to be able to get in and out.
All right. So right now, the questions that are, that still seem open to the council is outdoor storage, gate location and operation, and off-street access, if you're pulling into that gate. Architectural views, maintenance agreement, and potentially fire department input. The council looking at anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
I don't think we need to see the agreement for the stormwater pond. And I think if Shane and the city attorney works it out with the storage facility, I think that's good enough. And I don't know if we necessarily, I don't think we need to see the architectural plans. I mean, the planning look at that to make sure it meets our ordinance requirements. I don't, a lot of the stuff is requested. I don't know if we, I understand the fire department, maybe they should look at it for the closeness of the buildings for fire protection. I've been to many storage facilities. A lot of them have buildings that close, so if they are allowed other places, I don't know how, maybe there's fire hydrants there, maybe it's a little different, I don't know. So I can understand having that looked at, but a lot of these other things, that stormwater pond agreement, that could take a month or better to get that done and approved, so... And I don't think we should be holding them up that long.
Liz's comments were specifically looking at items two and seven, though architectural review did come up, architectural details. Two is landscaping. Any comments on those? Nothing on landscaping?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bettinger.
I think a lot of the things that were mentioned tonight are already addressed in Liz's conditions, permit conditions, so I, in my opinion, I think we could move forward with this tonight. I mean, I think she's addressed everything already.
I don't know why you think that the maintenance agreement would take a month. I mean, I get...
Somebody's got to put it together. It's got to be reviewed by both parties. Any amendments or changes? It's going to take a while. It's not going to be a couple days.
And what about the outdoor storage?
It's inside a fenced-in area. It's screened. I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. The recommendation that came from the planning and zoning was to not allow outdoor storage.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I believe that there is no screening. I remember Kirk driving by it and what was said at P&amp;Z. It's not screened, unless I'm wrong.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
From my recollection, the chain link fence is just a regular chain link fence. And if we were to allow outside storage, I would expect to have the same conditions as far as, or similar conditions as far as that things are operable and easily moved around as needed, so it doesn't turn into just a general storage area for whatever.
So licensed, top of the line, mobile, but.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so how do we proceed? There's some questions that some of the council has, Councilmember Bettinger says those questions will be answered later. Let's see the rest. Councilmember Rainville, you made the motion.
I would prefer to have those questions answered. He does have two weeks before the next meeting, is it two weeks?
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today, to our next council meeting, gives him the opportunity to get those questions answered. If by chance the maintenance agreement is not fully complete, if he can, if he can show that he's making progress towards it, we can consider that at the time. But I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. And again, as the mayor said, and was evident at the planning and zoning committee meeting, a lot of what came through was brand-new to the committee at that time. They didn't have the information at that time, and I don't see us having a lot of that information now.
Any other comments? Well, then first we have a motion and a second that needs to be addressed, pending the outcome of that, potentially another motion. So the motion, Laurie, can you read that back, please?
Do you want to make a motion, or Councilmember Rainville seconded this to move forward just for discussion? Do you want to make a motion to table it until the September 12th meeting? Gate, architectural review, stormwater maintenance agreement, operation, filtration?
Do you want to talk in that, so that was amended? And that was the second, you had seconded originally, Councilmember Bettinger?
Yep. I withdrew on my second, don't amend it.
All right. So is there a second to the amended? Actually, with no second, we'll let it die and then-
Dies.
It dies for no second. I think we need to go back and say the, the original motion needs to be voted on. The amendment was willingness to amend, but you weren't willing to second the amendment, so the original motion was moved. And so the question is, do you want to, do you want to proceed with this as recommended by the P&amp;Z? Was that the original motion?
Yes.
For discussion? So we had a motion to second, and so all in favor of that, proceeding with the recommendation from the P&amp;Z as presented?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And so that motion fails. Now, if you want to make a second motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would move that we table the request for conditional use permit to allow multiple buildings on a single parcel, the addition of two newer storage buildings, and an interim use permit to allow for outdoor storage on a four-acre property owned at 19950 Iguana, owned by Josh Peterson.
Second.
And, Mr. Mayor?
And, Councilmember Rainville?
And I would move that it be denied for, I mean, it's moved, but my reasons would be as previously stated.
Could you clarify?
That we would like to get council to decide on outdoor storage, the gate location and operation, the discussion of off-streets uses, the maintenance agreement, fire department review, the architectural review, building plans, and that if outdoor storage is agreed upon by the council, that we include that all vehicles must be licensed and operable.
And I think we did with the other one, was mobile as well?
Mobile, yes.
All right, with that clarification, Councilmember Bryan, do you still second?
I'll second.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to adjourn.
Before adjourn, could we just, as a council, then ask Laurie, representing staff here, to contact the fire department for comment?
Yes.
And, and motion to adjourn. Second, needing adjourn.